Take a quick. We'll call Ms. Panato? Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Valencia?
Here.
Ms. Bedberaza?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Stembridge?
Here.
And Ms. Panato?
Here.
All right, great. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes. We'll go to the one, looking at the one, hearing's scheduled for 1 o'clock, and ask if there are any withdrawals or deferrals that anyone may have from that time, request on that time, true?
I, Paul Ruffo, for the first project. 1954, I'm sorry, 1954, 4648 Leo Birmingham. We request a deferral to the next available date. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you.
Javier, what's the next available date?
Yes, Madam Chair, next available is June 6.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion to defer?
Second. Thank you. Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Bedberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Returning to the rediscussions for 11:30 a.m. The first case is BOA 141-7892, address of 31 Wellington Hill Street.
Is the applicant present? Jessica, are you, do you know if the applicant is present?
I don't see, I believe the raised hands is for a different project because we error wrote, but I think we're just telling you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I do see that Cara is present, but muted.
Isn't it Cara? Is it Cara?
Yes, yes. I'm here for the 1103-1115 Commonwealth Ave. project.
Oh, we're on 31 Wellington Hill? Okay, can I suggest we move on in that case?
Back?
Yeah.
In that case, the next, the next case is BOA 135-1164, address of 170 Old Colony Avenue. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Timothy Johnson?
And also Kevin Curd, the applicant over.
Please proceed.
I, yes, this is Tim Johnson, the project architect. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Now wait till we come up on screen.
No problem, and if you could also just, you know, we know this was deferred last time. If you can also just remind us if you've made any changes since then?
Yes, Madam Chair, I was going to give a brief overview
Perfect.
of the project and our revisions per the city comments.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, this case was continued. This is a four-story, four-unit building with balconies. All four units are two-bedroom. If you could stay on the first slide for just a moment, thank you. All four units are two-bedroom, two-bath units, 775 square foot average. This is an all-electric building for heating, cooling, and cooking, no fossil fuel hookups. Next slide, please. This is a corner lot that faces the Old Colony Boulevard. Per the BPDA South Boston Planning Study, this site would be in a density bonus height zone. The current ceiling for South Boston, Article 68, is four stories. Next slide, please. This is the site plan. Per the BTD, Boston Transportation Department comments, the one-car garage facing Earl Street, which is at the top of the sheet, has been deleted. This is a transit-oriented development within a quarter mile of the Andrew Square Transit Station. Per the BPDA comments, the building has been along Cold Old Colony Ave., on the right side of the sheet. The building has been set back two to three feet, per Boston Complete Streets, providing an eight-and-a-half-foot-wide sidewalk with street trees. This project is in the coastal resilience flood overlay district. The media room in the, at the lower level, has been deleted. There is no living space below base flood elevation plus one foot. Also, because of the reduction in living space, we also reduced the density, the FAR, from 3.5 to 3.2. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Yeah, one more. Sorry, one more to the 3D view, please. That's fine. Per the zoning, per the ZBA comments, Unit 1 has been designated as the workforce housing with rent limits. And with that, I'll hand it off to my client for closing comments.
Thank you. With respect to workforce housing, after our last meeting with the ZBA, I, through Jeff Hampton, connected and met with Michelle McCarthy, the Deputy Director of Housing Policy and Compliance at the Boston Planning Development Agency. This project at four units is too small to trigger any city affordable housing requirements, and the city has no housing policies for projects this small. However, to ensure the project includes workforce housing, I propose that the project be approved by the board, subject to the rent for the first four apartments being capped for 10 years at the maximum rent for 100% AMI two-person households. That's essentially a cap on 25% of the housing units. I did discuss with the, with the city if we could give preference to folks who work in human service agencies in the city, as I work with a few, but the city discouraged such targeting. I note with respect to the other three units that their nature, in particular, they're small units, they're not luxury units, is such that they will add in a positive way to the range of market rental housing available to folks in this area. Also, briefly on community process, we heard from the board at the last hearing, they wanted us to continue to meet with the community. And since the last meeting, we did meet again with the Andrew Square Civic Association. We also reached out in a couple of ways to the two projects, the poems, who spoke at the last hearing, but neither responded to our outreach. And I note at the last hearing that Congressman Steven Lynch, Council President Ed Flynn, and Councilor Mike Flaherty all went on record in support of the project. And I would just conclude by thanking the board for continuing the hearing to this date and providing us with the opportunity to consider the board's input and refine the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you made any changes to the physical, like the height or, you know, dimensions? I know you mentioned setback and removing the parking space.
This is Tim Johnson, the architect. Yes, the height of the building, four stories, has remained at 40 feet, which is the ceiling for South Boston, has remained the same. By pushing the building back two to three feet along Old Colony, we did compress the, did compress the building crosswise, which is, was a reduction in our FAR. We also got rid, as I mentioned, got rid of any living space in the basement, and were able to generate a full two-bedroom, one-bath unit on the first floor, which is the workforce housing.
Are there questions from the board? Okay, hearing done, I'll take public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS held in a Butters meeting for 170 Old Colony Avenue on August 8, 2022. Less than 10 of Butters attended. Butters who attended the meeting were opposed to the proposed building due to the size and height and the precedent of its app. The Andrew Square Civic Association is also opposed to the building, and this is the new plans, due to the lack of parking, the FAR, and the density of the project, and because of the negative impact it would have on direct to Butters. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, no matter of the chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office, if the councilor would like to go on record in support based on our good community process that the project will have an affordable component and the attention to sustainability with the building being fully electrified, Council President Flynn respectfully requests that the proponent work closely with the community during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Solid, City Council Large Michael Flaherty. Echoing the sentiments of Council President Flynn's office, as well as adding that the councillor would like to just highlight the fact that the setback, the building was pushed back for more setback, as well as the adding of workforce housing in the area. Council to go on record in support.
Thank you. Have no additional raised hands. Any other questions from the board? Hearing done, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso, with two proviso. One, that one of the units be designated as an affordable unit to work closely with MOH, and the second be that the, that you, that it goes under BPDA Design Review, paying special attention to the fourth floor massing on Old Colony and Earl Street to reference the 35 height limit and the adjoining buildings.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Bedberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we will have. I'm sorry. 31 Wellington?
Yeah.
For case, for case BOA 141-7892, the address being 31 Wellington Hill Street. The applicant or representative available?
Can we raise your hand if you're on for this case? Let me suggest the.
Madam Chair, this side here, it is up to the board, but I'd recommend to do a DWAP. But it's up to the board to do DWAP or deferral in this case.
Do we have a raised hand here? John, are you here for this, for this case? I just had to request to unmute you. Hi, are you here for this, for 31 Wellington Hill Street, John?
Sorry, no, I'm not.
Okay, okay.
A mistake.
In that case, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion of denial without prejudice, but to also recommend that the mayor neighborhood liaison reaches out to the applicant and recommend that they put dimensions onto the site plan, because this is the second time that it's coming in front of us. There's no dimensions of the curb, the aisle, parking spaces.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Bedberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. And thank you, Mr. Noonan, for making note of that. Next case?
Next case is BOA 141-5203, the address being 1103, so 1115 Commonwealth Ave. Is the applicant or representative available?
Yes, right here. My name is Attorney Kara Scoville, I'm with Calabrese Law Associates, business address, 1 Boston Place, Suite 2600, Boston, Massachusetts. We're counsel for Taj Enterprises LLC, the applicant, and we're assisting him with the application today, which is seeking the board's approval of his business, which is located at 1103, 1115 Commonwealth Ave. in Alston Brighton, the Packards Corner neighborhood. He permitted to operate as a pawn shop, along with its current approved use as a retail location and jewelry store. The premises currently zoned in a CC2 commercial district. Retail jewelry store is an approved use there. We have a certificate of occupancy there for the jewelry store and the retail store. And the pawn shop is a conditional use, that we require the board's approval. It's our first application for the pawn shop and the first time before the board on this matter, and our client's been attempting to obtain approval for the usage in general since the spring of this last year, but there's been some, some delays in the process. The, the appellant's been operating the pawn shop industry for nearly 16 years, from 2008 until 2021. He successfully operated a location in Somerville, and he was forced to close that location due to building renovations. He also briefly operated a third location in Cambridge, which is a retail location, which was a retail location and a pawn shop. We, we submitted a memorandum in support of the approved pawn shop use, which outlines concrete steps that the applicant has been taking to go above and beyond to ensure safe, secure premises, as well as a positive customer experience for the project if it is approved. And that's based on his prior experience and the prior policies that he's had in place at his other locations. There's considerable, there's considerable support for this project. We submitted a 10-page petition containing 233 names from his potential customer base that's been submitted to, in support of the project. It was submitted about a few days ago. And we also have, have here today, there's retired Somerville detective Ernest Nidali. He's present here today, and he's, and he's prepared to provide some supporting testimony at all, provide some supporting testimony. Mr. Nidali worked with Mr. Bale, the applicant, for several years at his Somerville location. He's observed that there's been no adverse effects from the pawn shop use in the Somerville neighborhood, and he is also able to testify that Mr. Bale has contributed positively law enforcement whenever that would come up in the nature of the pawn shop business. We're happy to address any additional questions. I could pause for questions in a moment. But we also ask that, since this is our first time before the board on this project, we ask that if there are any concerns that are raised that are significant, we'd be given an opportunity to, to address them before being subject to a final vote that might be a negative.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing done, may I take public testimony?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Alston Brighton Liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, I'd like to defer to the judgment of the board, but I would like to note that we had the applicant reach out to Butters. We didn't hear any opposition back from them. We also asked the applicant to connect with the All Saints Civic Association. The All Saints Civic Association wrote a letter in support, which the board should have received earlier today, approving the proposal with the proviso that the understated signage be used to enable the storefront to better blend in with, better blend in with other businesses in the immediate vicinity of Packards Corner. Once again, we will defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Any other raised hands? Have no additional raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Did Detective Nidali want to say a few words? He's here?
Who didn't raise his hand?
Okay.
May I have a motion?
May I make a motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
Can I just have this applicant only? So that motion?
Yes.
For this applicant only.
Okay, second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Bedberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1420227, the address being 60 to 62 Wellsmere, Wellsmere Road. Is the applicant or the representative available?
Hi, can you raise your hand if you're on for this project, please? ONS, if you know who that. But I'm sending a request to make you a panelist, so once you, a panelist, just unmute yourself and begin to tell us about the project.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Hushman Rabshaw from Taj Engineering LLC, representing the owner and the applicant, Mr. Richardson Luke. The existing dwelling is a two-and-a-half-story dwelling, which is about 100 feet or less than 100 feet away from intersection of Wellsmere Road and Washington Street. And it is located on the north side of the Wellsmere Road. Currently, it is a two-and-a-half-story building, two units. The applicant is proposing to remove the roof, and without increasing the height of the building, convert the gabled roof to a flat roof and add a third unit on the top, on the third floor. So basically converting the half a story, if you may, on the third floor or the attic, to a full unit. There is egress in front, and there is another egress proposed in the back. Currently, when the, when the building was used, there were basically same number of parked cars, parked on the driveway and on the street, opposite and honestly. We allow two parking per unit. Basically, the parking pattern will remain the same. We are not changing the footprint of the building at all. Everything will, the footprint will remain as it is. Like I said, the only change will be the top floor being converted into a third unit. In the vicinity of the existing building, within a distance of 60, again, to 100 feet, there are two other buildings, which are three-story. And so, we are of the opinion that the proposed third unit will be very much in the, matches the existing appearance of the neighborhood by the other three-story buildings across the street and on the side, not too far away. With that, I'll be more than happy, if I can, to answer any questions.
Of course, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, hearing done, may I have public?
It's Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of the board. Our office held in a Butters meeting on January 30. I don't have much more information beyond that due to personnel changes within our office, but we're unaware of any concerns at this time. Thank you.
Any other raised hands? Don't know raised hands at the moment, thank you. Thank you, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Bedberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Next on the list is case BOA 141-8040, with the address of 45 to 55 C O Road. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Miller from McDermott Quotient Millar in Boston, with the business address of 28 State Street, Boston, Massachusetts, on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined today by, by the applicant, John Garrity, and Frank Marino, the project engineer. This project is an application for an extension of a non-conforming use. By way of background, this property is a long-existing multifamily use in a 1F district. The proposal here is to replace a shallow kiddie pool with a new splash pad for the younger residents of this apartment complex to allow them to have, you know, to cool off and have fun this summer. This new splash pad will provide a safer alternative to that previous existing pool, and also provide some additional site upgrades and improvements along with it. The only work done for this project is being done in the pool area. That pool area is located in the middle of this larger apartment complex. Due to its location in the middle of this complex and its relatively contained nature, this project will have little impact on the neighbors. This project did have an Butters meeting with ONS, and we also met with, with the West Fairmont Hill Community Group, who, after hearing, hearing this project, supported it. My presentation is relatively small because this is a relatively simple application. We're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, any questions from the board? This seems quite straightforward. Let's get public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. We completed the community process and held in a Butters meeting on January 18. Neighbors were in support. They did ask that the applicant conceived the property management group.
They did ask that the applicant conceived the property management group would allow abutting families to have access to the pool slash splash pad. The applicant also went on to reach out to the West Fairmont Hill Community Group, which expressed no concerns and, I believe, sent a letter in support of this project. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Freas here from Councilor Ricardo Royal's office. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
No additional raised hands.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Lodge Michael Flaherty, Councilor, right in his court.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
The next case is BOA 1401305, the address being twenty-seven Dixwell Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Law, Seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant, which is on Point Capital, represented by its two principals who are on the hearing, Max Taylor and Garrett Hogan. And also with us today is Bond Worthington, the project architect. This is a proposal for twenty-seven Dixwell Street in Jamaica Plain, which is currently a one-story industrial-use building that is entirely inconsistent with the residential character of this street, which along one side is predominantly larger, older multifamily residential apartment buildings, and across the street is the Hernandez School, a larger, you know, institutional school use. So the proposal is to demolish the existing one-story metal box industrial building and construct a new three-story building, which will contain twelve residential units. And the breakdown of that is one studio, two one-bedrooms, and nine two-bedroom units, and twelve parking spaces at the rear of the building. This project is larger than ten units, so it is subject to IDP, but less than fifteen, so not subject to Article eighty process. But assuming approval, we will work with the IDP staff at the BPDA to designate the AMI levels and identify the location of the two IDP units, but those two constitute greater than thirteen percent as required by IDP. The prior proposal was a somewhat larger building, but we had a productive and engaged community process, which resulted in this smaller and scaled building. There are four private roof decks for the units on the top floor of the building. We also worked closely with the neighbors regarding the side driveway aisles and creating a little bit of a buffer zone. And obviously, as I said, been present in some of your other cases today, the push-pull of open space in the rear versus the desire for, you know, as many parking spaces as possible for the twelve-unit building landed us with the twelve parking spaces for the twelve units, which is a one-to-one ratio, less than the one-point-five required by the code. And we think that represents a fair balance between what the neighborhood was looking for. The zoning violations were reduced as a result of the revisions, and we are left with a request for a number of stories is exceeded in this sub-district, two-point-five is the limit, and we're showing a full three-story building. The FAR is point-six in this sub-district, and this proposal is one-point-three. And again, the off-street parking insufficiency is one-point-five required and one-point-oh is provided. The use MFR is a forbidden use, so we're seeking variance for that item as well. Those are the items for zoning relief. And like I said, we had a robust neighborhood process, which I'm sure ONS will tell you about. We received support from JPNC and have a separate memorandum of agreement with the Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association Housing Committee, with whom we also worked closely. And with that, I will conclude the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Lacasse. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move to public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Calleto here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record and defer the judgment of this board. As mentioned, an abutters meeting was facilitated from the proposal back on November eighth of last year. We received unanimous support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council Zoning Subcommittee, also from the Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association Housing Committee, but that came with a memorandum of understanding, which is agreed to by the proponent here today. Additionally, I would like to make note that many of the director abutters also expressed their support. And I will conclude my testimony, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Royce. Nineteen Olmsted Street with Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association Housing Committee agreed we had a very responsive and good community process involving the abutters, also involving Urban Edge that owns all the other apartment buildings on the street, which are all affordable housing, and with the representative from the Hernandez School. I mean, we had, we saw good changes, and we have agreements on things that are important to the abutters, like fencing and tree plantings, and so the construction impacts on the Hernandez School and the abutters. So we're very much in support of this project to replace a very shabby industrial building with this residential project. Thank you.
Tony?
Yes, I live at A World Ave. My name is Antonio Cruz, owner of A World Ave. I support the project. I just want to piggyback on what Carolyn said. It's obviously going to be a great, a great uplift to the neighborhood.
Okay. Mike Hough?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Mike Hough, McMillan under Director of City and Services for Boston City Council, Tenja Lor. We'd like to go on record of supporting twenty-six Dixwell Street. The councilor had met with William Most of BTD, and William also conveyed to us that he met with the developers, brought back changes, and there was no pushback, and so we want to go on record to support this project moving forward. Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Lodge Michael Flaherty, Councilor, right in his court.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1415681, with the address being twenty-one Linden Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, Tyler Winder, owner, applicant here for twenty-one Linden.
Great, can you walk us through the proposal?
Yeah, so currently, we have a single-family sitting at twenty-one Linden. As we're looking to pull up the plans, what we're proposing is just a double dormer on the top. Looking to get a master suite, so looking at the screen, kind of that middle roof line is what we currently have, and then the two dormers coming off both the sides. The rest of the building will be just, you know, gut renovated to make it a four, a four-bed, a single-family residence. We are looking for the roof structure, the roof structure violation, just changing into the dormer. Back of the property, it's just going to be the two, the two decks, and it's not violating any rear setbacks, and it is just adding in the additional roof, or the additional deck above, so it's not in any violations. Relatively simple. We had good support from the street and the neighbors. This is a relative occurrence of how the the street has been developed, so it's very fitting with the neighborhood.
All right, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Chair, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an abutters meeting for twenty-one Linden Street on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, which was attended by abutters, and the proponent answered all questions. Abutters were pleased that twenty-one Linden is staying a single-family home. The proponent presented at the Dorchester Heights Neighborhood Association meeting and answered all questions asked. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, have no raised hands at the moment.
Madam, all the chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support, based on a good community process, feedback from neighbors at the meetings, and the councilor respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work with neighbors during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Lodge Michael Flaherty. Recognizing the communal process that went into drafting Article sixty-eight, the council recognizes that there are projects that do have merit and considers this to be one of them. And that being said, he'd echo those sentiments to Council President Flynn's office and go on record in support.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review paying special attention to the dormer and roof line.
May I have a second? Second. Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Very much.
Next, we have two combined cases. First one being case BOA 1418800, the address of one-twenty-one Warren Avenue. The pending case being BOA 1418914, at the same address of one-twenty-one Warren Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative available?
Hi, if you're on, can you raise your hand for this project? Okay, there it is. Andrew, I'm sending a request to make you a panelist. Once you are a panelist, just unmute yourself, it may take a couple of seconds, but you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, sorry about that. Everyone see me? Andrew Bressard, applicant and property owner, present?
All right, can you tell us about the project briefly?
Yeah, one-twenty-one Warren Ave is a townhouse in South End. It was previously a two-rental-unit building. We are looking to do a full gut renovation to convert it back into a single-family residence. Number of projects on this street have had similar applications. We are looking to kind of formulate a very similar conformed design to other buildings on the street and revert it back to its original use. It is currently zoned as a single-family still, is my understanding. Part of the application is to add a six-foot balcony off the parlor level. We're also looking to excavate and and create living space on the lower garden level. That will require a rear window well, which will provide for egress from the rear bedroom in the lower level. We're also looking to construct a roof deck with a hatch access. As you know, Massachusetts state code requires a headhouse for access to a roof over, I believe, four stories. We are restricted by landmarks regulations to not construct headhouses on roofs, so we're looking for relief to allow for a hatch access on the roof.
Any questions from the board?
Can you talk about the living space in the basement?
Sure, yeah, currently, it is a, about a, just under seven foot. I guess you would call it a crawl space. You can stand up fully in there, but it's unfinished. It was used for storage and laundry facilities. We're looking to create about an eight-foot clearance head height in the basement. We'll incorporate a kind of a flex room, which will be, you know, a media playroom, a bathroom, and a bedroom to the rear.
What draw, what level is that? Because now when you see level one, I don't see the basement level.
You're right, you're right on the right page. It's the one to the far right. It might be labeled as garden.
Oh, I see, yep.
Yep, garden level.
Okay, and do you think the the light well is sufficient light and air for that rear bedroom?
Yeah, we're actually going to, we proposed a very wide, open window, which it's actually three windows, one, one large casement window, and then two double hungs on either side. Above that will be a, a walkway which will access the rear yard from the street level. As you can see on the schematic, just to the left of that, that walkway is in the center of the the window well. So the window will allow for light to come in, light and air. That walkway will go to a, just a steel-constructed floating staircase, which will allow for air to flow below, underneath, above, and allow for light to to get through to the window well as well.
Would you consider putting like a ladder along the foundation?
Yeah, there will be a ladder, I believe.
It's not noted on your well, but, okay.
Yeah, that'll be part of the the building, the building drawings, construction drawings, because that will be an egress window. So they will need to be able to get out the window, and then there'll be a ladder to get out of the the window well in case of a fire.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Yep.
And what about G-Frog applicant building?
Yes, we have an approved site plan with Coltech retaining tanks to be installed in the rear patio. That will capture the roof stormwater, as well as the patio stormwater, to be infiltrated back into the groundwater.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, no.
I think, I think what Jean is alluding to is the BPDA recommendation of removal of living spaces in the basement due to G-Frog, but I think that's probably a recommendation. So some of the concerns is obviously flooding the concurrent in basement, and so the BPDA at times recommends no habitable living, living like bedrooms.
Yeah, well, where the, I can say that the concrete slab and the concrete sidewalls that will be fortifying the existing foundation will be all waterproof concrete and will act as a waterproof barrier. We're also not excavating below the the water level. So the, we're definitely taking proper precautions to ensure that there's no water infiltration. And, and again, we're creating a, a new water infiltration system that will direct all of the stormwater to those, those rear tanks as well.
Okay.
Is that just your question, Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hi, yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Christianelli from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held an abutters meeting in January of two thousand and twenty-three, where no opposition was shown by the abutters. We did receive one note of opposition. At this time, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, all the chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's offices. The councilor would like to go on record in support, based on feedback from neighbors and the Ellis Neighborhood Association, who indicated there were no outstanding concerns. Council President Flynn respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work closely with the community during the construction phase. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenali, Boston Row, owner trust, and we have both G-card letters from the applicant.
Thank you. No additional raise hands. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of B P D A approval, I'm sorry, approval with B P D A Design Review, and to ensure that there is a ladder on the window well.
Okay. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato? Yes. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Bedaberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next case, B O A one three seven eight one zero five. The address being one oh nine Utah Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass last seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant and property owner Juan Heredia. The proposal before you today is to change the occupancy of this existing four-unit dwelling from three-family and an A D U to a four-family, essentially removing the A D U from that status, which was achieved a couple of years ago by the property owner. And then the second part of the proposal is to, if you could hold that screen right there, to add approximately three hundred square foot addition at the rear of the property to enlarge the third floor unit by placing that box on top of the existing second-floor roof of the building in the back, which is only two stories, and create a larger third-floor unit with a small walkout terrace there in the back. Most of the zoning violations are as a result of existing conditions related to dimensional requirements. And by converting the A D U from that status to regular status, which I'll explain the reason he's seeking it, converts it to an M F R, so we need to use variance for that. Mr. Heredia is also a resident of Columbia and travels back and forth and acquired this property just before COVID and undertook construction and renovations and preservation of this lovely historic property and ran into significant financial expenses that were unexpected, and including caring for some family members in Columbia. So what he would like to do now, and currently he is the owner occupant of the A D U. He has occupied that and will continue to occupy that unit as his residence. But he wants to remove that status so that he can now convert the building to a four-unit condominium building, stay in the one unit that will be his, rent one of the units, and then sell the other two to recoup the financial conditions that he incurred as a result of preserving this building. If you could scroll ahead, I can show you some elevations to better understand the... Right there is good. So from the slope of the land, you can see that the basement unit has a full walkout condition in the back. And actually, there's a small alley pathway between his property and the adjacent property that serves as the private entry point for that A D U in the back with a full walkout condition. Next slide. And next slide showing the elevation of the third floor. So right here, the white portion of the top floor there is the existing roof line. And while Eagle Hill is not specifically a historic district, the Eagle Hill Civic Association is very mindful of additions being not visible. So the proposed addition to the third floor is tucked behind the roof line and will not be visible and alter any aspect of the historic nature of the structure, but will make what's a really tiny unit on the top floor a little larger and have a little more space, and then have that little walkout terrace for some usable open space. And then you can see on the lower level, the stairway down to the entrance to the basement unit. And again, the slope of the land, which shows that most of the basement unit is not below grade. This is way up on Eagle Hill, up on the high school, so it's not within the coastal flood resilience overlay district at all. Next slide. And this is just the opposite side elevation, again, showing the... If we could just scroll it down a little bit, so I can explain there that, nope. Yep, oh. The top floor, yes, perfect. Again, the top floor is tucked behind the existing historic roof line, so it's to not be visible from the front. And on the lower screen, lower portion of the screen, lower left, shows the rear elevation of the building with the proposed little terrace and the full walkout condition with separate entrance for the existing basement unit. Mr. Heredia is here as well, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. But that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Lacass. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Benitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. O N S hosted an abutters meeting on August tenth, twenty-twenty-two. Two abutters joined the call and had questions about A D Us and timelines for construction, but no opposition was raised at the meeting. The applicant also met with Eagle Hill Civic Association on November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. The association voted to support with twelve residents in support and five in opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raise hands? Additional raise hands, no. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'm sure I'd make a motion to approve with B P D A Design Review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato? Yes. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Bedaberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Everyone have a good rest of your day.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.